City County Planning Commission, please come to order. Ms. Martin, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Commissioner Rich, Commissioner Martins, Commissioner Balance, Commissioner Clark.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Coppingger.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert, Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Madison.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Houston, Chair Runner.
Yes ma'am. You have the copy of the summary minutes of the April 19th meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? No corrections, I'd ask for a motion. Thank you sir, and second, thank you.
Commissioner Balance.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Coppingger.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Same.
Commissioner Madison.
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner.
Yes ma'am.
I request that you order that the Warren County zoning ordinance subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan with all of its elements effective May 3rd, 2018 be introduced as exhibits for tonight's hearings. I'd further request that you order that the staff reports, all attachments, together with the commission's file for each application, be introduced as exhibits. And finally, I'd ask that Ben Peterson, Executive Director, Rachel Hurt, Planner, and Monica Ramsey, Planner, be sworn as witnesses before you and that their oath and qualifications be reflected in the record for each hearing.
For order. I swear to tell the truth before this commission.
I do.
Thank you all. Any questions on the subdivision approvals that were in the packet? No questions, we'll go on to letters of credit and performance bonds. We have three items. Any questions on those three items? No questions, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, and a second, thank you sir.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Coppingger.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner.
Yes ma'am. We have no unfinished business, and that brings us to the public hearing. The first item tonight is docket 2018-20ZBG. Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated has filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately 85.329 acres located at Zero Mizpah Road bounded by Louisville Road and Glasgow Road from agriculture to heavy industrial with a general development plan, and we will have the staff report from Ms. Hurt.
Thank you Chairman Runner. And I guess before I get started with the report, you should have a few revised documents at your seats, including some new binding elements and a few additional exhibits, so I'll reference those as we go through the staff report. We did have a pre-application conference on November 21st for this property on Mizpah Road. It's just north of the existing trans park, and if this is approved, it would be added to the land within the existing trans park. The property was also recently annexed into the city of Bowling Green. You can see the current zoning of the property is agriculture, and the existing use of the property is also agriculture. You can see the majority of the area is agriculture with all of the existing industrial uses kind of concentrated to the south portion of the screen there. The future land use designation for the property is industrial. This designation consists of areas developed or suitable for the uses permitted in light industrial and heavy industrial zoning categories. Because such areas require rail and truck access, future industrial development will continue to gravitate to the rail corridors and I-65 interchanges. Complementary service and commercial uses are allowed up to 25% of the total contiguous area. The proposed HI zone is listed as a potentially compatible zoning designation and may be compatible. You all should determine if the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. With that, I'll jump on to the last portion there on page one with the compatibility regarding surrounding development. We have done a site characteristics review which indicates that there are adequate facilities and infrastructure available to support the proposed development. Site design has been addressed in the general development plan, which you do have a revised general development plan or a site plan at your seats this evening, and has also been addressed in the binding elements in conjunction with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. With that, I'm gonna, I'll come back to the points to consider at the end, but I'm gonna jump on to page two. We have our future land use map and category review section. Staff evaluated eight goals, objectives, and action items from the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, and we have provided a compliance summary of each of those items on page two. I will draw your attention to, I guess, LU-231 and TR-2.1. Since we've received the latest round of binding element revisions, staff feels that those items are now complied with, so you might notice on the motion page later that those were in both sections, but we just wanted to note that we feel that the recent set of binding elements satisfy both of those items. Other, and those did deal specifically with transportation-related items, which I'll go over here in just a second. Other items we looked at dealt with compliance with the future land use map, compatibility with the surrounding development, environmental concerns, and economic development considerations. I'm gonna move on to the site characteristics review. I'll reference our new site plan here that's shown on the screen. You can see for the layout of the site, they're proposing the building to be centrally located in the property with parking areas in the front. There'd be truck access to the rear of the property, and the site would be served by a single access point that would actually come off of a newly constructed road, and I'll hit on that in just a second in the binding element changes. You can also see on this site plan that there is a landscape buffer proposed around the perimeter of the property. It's a 50-foot buffer, and that's in that dark green shaded area. And you'll also note in the binding elements that the applicants have committed to at least 20% green space. Typically, in the industrial zones, there'd be a minimum of 10%, so this is an increase of, over what would normally be required by the zoning ordinance. With that, I'll direct your attention to the new set of binding elements. That would be this set here, and then there's also another page that's highlighted that actually replaces number 11 in your revised set, so. I'll just touch on a few in greater detail, but others I'll just summarize. I will say that most of the proposed binding elements are very similar to the existing binding elements that are already in effect for the current trans park, and in some instances they're exactly the same as the current binding elements for the existing trans park. Number one deals with landscaping, and again, it references this landscape buffer on the site plan here. Says in addition to meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance, the development shall include vegetation barriers, screens, and open spaces as generally depicted on rezoning exhibit two, which is this exhibit, subject to final engineering of the development. A screening or buffer area may be deleted or reduced at any location on the property if all landowners adjoining that location agree and the above landscaping buffer provisions of the Warren County zoning ordinance are complied with. Number two looks at storm water and drainage considerations. Number three addresses underground utilities. Number four looks at noise control. Number five deals with hazardous materials and uses. Number six addresses screening of loading docks. Number seven looks at signage. Number eight addresses lighting. Number nine looks at malodorous emissions. Number 10 deals with green space. Again, they have committed to 20% green space on the site. Also, they've committed that all parking areas within the property shall be landscaped and contained at least, contain at least 10% green space for parking aisles and islands. The zoning ordinance only requires 5%, so that's in addition to what our ordinance would require. And then it also states that paved parking areas shall be set back at least 15 feet from any property line. With that, I'll direct your attention to this sheet here, the highlighted sheet. So number 11, we have a new number 11, and I can say there have been various discussions between Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Warren County Public Works, Bowling, Bowling Green Public Works, our staff at the Planning Commission, the applicants, and everyone involved with the process. And so this was kind of a coordinated effort to come up with this proposed binding element this evening, which should hopefully address any traffic-related concerns that anyone may have. I'm gonna read through it, it's kinda long, so bear with me here. It states that ingress and egress to the property will be over a new internal street to be constructed by the property owner from Commonwealth Boulevard across adjacent land to the property. That's this other exhibit that you have before you, so you'll see on this exhibit the, the property you're considering for rezoning this evening is located just to the north, and you'll see that this would be the newly proposed roadway that this binding element is referencing. So it'd run all the way from Commonwealth Boulevard up through this existing property and then tie into the proposed development here. The new internal street will be designed to accommodate heavy vehicles and meet the standards of an industrial park roadway. Not later than July 30th, 2018, the property owner will seek closure of that portion of Mizpah Road from the point that intersects with the new internal street to the northwest boundary of the property for the purpose of limiting industrial traffic thereon. That would be this portion here, so it'd go from where the new road comes into the proposed site here, and the right-of-way of Mizpah would be closed all the way to this corner of the property here. So they're looking to close this portion of Mizpah Road to eliminate any potential for industrial traffic along Mizpah Road and even the potential for employees from this specific property also traveling on Mizpah Road. Upon closure of this portion of Mizpah Road, a physical barrier will be installed to eliminate vehicular traffic on the Warren County portion of Mizpah Road. Alternatively, the property owner, the Public Works Department of the City of Bowling Green, the Public Works Department of Warren County, and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet may agree to other methods to limit industrial traffic on or make improvements to the aforementioned portion of Mizpah Road. The property owner will cooperate with the City of Bowling Green and Warren County with regard to any road names or address changes resulting from industrial development of the property. If the aforementioned portion of Mizpah Road cannot be closed, the property owner will consult with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet about turn lanes thereon at its intersection with 31W. With that, I'll jump back to the original set of revised binding elements, and we'll go through the rest here. Number 12 addresses prohibited uses. Number 13 looks at building setbacks adjacent to residential uses. And number 14 and 15 look at environmental considerations for the property. I think that is it for the binding elements, and I did summarize those just because they're quite lengthy, but if anyone has any questions about any of the particular binding elements, I'll be happy to answer those. And with that, I'll jump back to page five of the staff report. The proposed general development plan meets a majority of the review criteria for site design. Compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the Planning Commission. The application will also be subject to further review for compliance with zoning ordinance requirements at the building permit level if approved. And with that, I'll wrap up with our points to consider. There's only a few, and that is that the proposal is consistent with the future land use map and industrial category. The proposed development complies with a majority of the site characteristics review criteria, and the proposed general development plan generally complies with a majority of the review criteria, review criteria for site design and compatibility. With that, I think I'm finished with the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you ma'am. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Hurt?
One question. So, the revised on number 11 was kind of a, everybody agreed?
That was a compilation of comments from KYTC, Bowling Green Public Works, and Warren County Public Works.
Is there a turning lane? Is there a turning lane proposed to go in and out of the site off of Commonwealth?
Well, I believe if we go back to, I don't know if you can see it on the aerial. Does somebody have the?
It's a little easier to see on this.
It's a straight in. It's honestly hard to tell in here. I don't know if we can tell on the aerial. Is there a timeline there? Okay. Well, the aerial doesn't help because it doesn't look like that. Well, I guess, you can't see with the road name, but they're telling me from the audience that there is no turn lane on Commonwealth.
Would they consider a designated turning lane in there with these big semi trucks?
I'm not sure. That would be up to the City of Bowling Green Public Works Department. From what I understand, Commonwealth Boulevard has already been constructed to accommodate industrial traffic that serves the sites within the trans park currently, but that would be up to the Bowling Green Public Works Department if they were going to require that.
Any other questions before we hear from the applicant? Other questions? Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
My name's Gaines Penn, English Lucas Priest in Owlsley, here on behalf of the Intermodal Transportation Authority. I only have a few comments to add, and that would be testimony from Ms. Rosansky about the economic development associated with this project.
You would state your name and address for us, please.
Meredith Rosansky, I'm with the Bowling Green Area Chamber of Commerce, so 710 College Street.
And you swear to tell the truth?
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
We'll just share this microphone.
That one should be on, the handheld?
Tess. Tess?
There you go. Now we have it.
Now we can do karaoke.
Yeah.
Just briefly, Ms. Rosansky, what is your connection with the Intermodal Transportation Authority?
I serve as the Chief Operating Officer for the Bowling Green Area Chamber of Commerce and also the Intermodal Transportation Authority via the management agreement between the two entities.
And with regard to the zone, the proposed zone change, one of the characteristics that the Planning Commission is to review is the economic development associated with this project. Can you, can you enlighten the commission on the economic development opportunities associated with this project?
Yes, within the existing trans park, we are limited now with the land that we have available, so having a lot available of this acreage, so 85 acres, this will be our largest new existing lot that we're able to develop, which opens up a wider variety of projects that we can then go after from an economic development standpoint.
Do we have any current lots in the trans park that are of this size?
Not north of CSX Rail.
Would this help promote jobs and bring more economic development to our community?
Absolutely. It requires, it allows us to recruit the larger projects that we've seen of late with Bilstein and Constellium.
Those are my questions, thank you.
Questions from the commissioners? What kind of sound barriers are you all anticipating to do to provide sound barrier between the neighbors? Because it looks like you've got neighbors all the way around.
There are, we have previously done different types of barriers, as it said in the binding elements, unless the property owner agreed to waive those barriers, they would be the same as what we've been seeing in the rest of the trans park. We, if you look at the restricted uses, we're very careful about the types of companies that we locate there. We haven't had neighbor complaints about sound in the trans park.
There's also a binding element. That'd be number four, that specifically addresses noise control.
Just didn't say what kind of barriers. That's what I was anticipating. Is it walls? Is it just trees?
Typically vegetative barriers.
So no walls or anything for the neighbor protection?
Mm-mm.
Other questions? Questions from anyone in the audience? No questions? Commissioners, any comments or questions before I call for a motion? Do we have any opposition to this request? I will ask. No opposition? Now I will ask. Comments, questions? If not, then go ahead. Yes, sir.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditional upon a general development plan docket 2018-20ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the following objectives and actions. LU-111, LU-112, LU-113, LU-231, LU-234, TR-21, ED-1, ED-3. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further requests this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you sir, we need a second. Thank you.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Coppingger.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner.
Yes ma'am. The motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you. Next item, 2018-10 Flume. Donald and Edith Flo have filed an application for a future land use map amendment, a tract of land containing approximately 5.8354 acres located at 3600 Huntsbin Road from agriculture to rural density residential. And also, the same applicants on docket number 2018-21Z County have also filed an application to rezone that same tract of land at that address from agriculture to rural residential with a general development plan. And we'll have the staff report from Ms. Ramsey.
Thank you Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference for the property you see outlined in yellow on January 12th of this year. As Chair Runner has already stated, this property is zoned agriculture, and the applicants are requesting to rezone that to rural residential after, if the future land use map amendment is successful, from agricultural to rural density. They, they intend to subdivide the property into two single-family residential lots. With that division, should this application be successful, that would result in a proposed density of .34 dwelling units per acre. This property has been zoned ag, as far as our records show, and the proposed rural residential zone is a potentially compatible zoning designation in the rural density residential flume category, should that be approved, and may be appropriate if this body determines that the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. We see the land uses in the surrounding area, a lot of agricultural, and then you see some single-family, couple vacant, public, public institutional, and then one commercial way up there. A site characteristic review indicates that there are generally adequate facilities and infrastructure, other than adequate water, to meet the fire control standards, and that this property contains several mature trees. And I will, I'll also point out on the future land use map, I hadn't showed that yet, future land use is agricultural in the area for the most part. And then, there is the, the proposed division of the property. At the bottom of the first page there, you'll see points to consider that if the flume amendment is approved, the proposal will be generally consistent with the flume and the rural density residential category. The proposed development generally complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, and the proposed general development plan generally complies with a majority of the review criteria for site design and compatibility, and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. If you go to page two, you'll see the category review. I just want to touch on a couple of those. One is in reference to LU-214 and PR-17. The applicants have committed to preserving a portion of the existing vegetation on the property, and the Planning Commission should determine if it complies with, with those objectives. Below that, we had mentioned fire control standards, which will address, or the applicants have addressed in the binding elements, but this property does not have adequate water, but complies with CF-53 since no more than four lots are proposed. And below that, just wanted to point out one more thing, that the proposal may comply with NCR-241, and it's up to you all to determine if the proposal is located in an area where infrastructure already exists, and whether or not the proposed lots will result in an increased amount of development pressure on the countryside. On page three, you'll see the site characteristics review. Again, just to point out, water adequacy, and we'll get to that in the binding elements in just a second. Waste water adequacy, each property will utilize an onsite septic system to be approved by the Health Department. Natural features, I apologize, I believe I misspoke earlier. No, I haven't. That is incorrect, that, that part about the natural features that applicants have not agreed, they do have a binding element for that, so apologize for that inconsistency in the staff report. Another thing to point out quickly, the portion of the property is comprised of a soil type that is designated as farmland of statewide importance, and the majority of the property is comprised of a soil type that is classified as very limited regarding soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields. The remaining portion of the property is classified as somewhat limited, but the applicants have agreed in their binding elements to a PERC test on the property. The other thing I will point out below that in site design and compatibility review is building orientation. The applicants have not specified which way the proposed home will be oriented, but staff does recommend that any new residents on the property be oriented toward Huntsbin Road. Page four, I'll just go through the binding elements really quickly. Number one, we've already mentioned about the septic system. Number two, no mobile or manufactured home shall be permitted on the property. Number three, each single-family resident shall have at least 1,600 square feet of heated and cooled living space, exclusive of garages and porches. Number four, each residence may, must be constructed of vinyl siding, brick, stone, concrete-based siding, or other modern masonry materials. Number five, the location of any proposed driveway shall be coordinated and approved by the Warren County Public Works Department prior to the application for a building permit. And number six, what I referenced earlier in, in reference to the fire control standards, the applicants have agreed to place on the plat for the property recorded in the office of the Warren County Clerk the following. At the time of recordation of this plat, the water provided to this property does not meet the fire control standards of Warren County. And number seven, to address the inconsistency with the trees in the staff report, all existing trees located on the perimeter of the development along the western property lines, which have a caliper of eight inches or greater, and which are located within 10 feet of the property line, will be maintained during development and construction on the property. So in conclusion, the applicants are requesting to subdivide the property into two lots, as you see there, of equal size of 2.9 acres each. The new building lot of record will be transferred to their son for him to build himself a new house. The existing lot will be transferred to their daughter at some point in the future. If the proposed flume amendment is approved, the proposed RR zoning may be appropriate, given the rural density residential flume designation and category description. The proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process, and this body should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area. And that is all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Ms. Ramsey. Commissioners, do you have any questions? No questions, thank you ma'am. Is there anything the applicant would like to add?
No.
Not, not, no, not one. Do we have any opposition to this request? No questions, no opposition from anyone? Commissioners, I would ask for a motion. We first need to act on the flume amendment, and should that pass, we will then address the zone change request. So I would ask for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment docket number 2018-10 Flume, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed flume amendment, as a method directive to amend the flume, is outlined in LU-114 in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, we need a second.
Thank you.
Thank you sir.
Commissioner Balance. Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Coppingger.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner.
Yes ma'am, and the motion carried, and now we will act on the zone change request.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditional upon a general development plan docket number 2018-21Z County, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by the compliance with the following objective and actions. LU-111, LU-112, LU-113, LU-214, LU-231, CF-26, CF-53, PR-17, NCR-241. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you sir, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Balance. Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Coppingger.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Madison.
Yes ma'am.
Chair Runner.
Yes ma'am, the motion carried. Our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you. And that brings us to new business, Mr. Peterson.
I'll just have one item at your, at your chairs. We have some proposed, a memo proposing some changes to our personnel, some personnel actions for you to consider. Just be happy to discuss any of those if you would like, otherwise, I'd just ask for a motion to accept those changes as submitted just prior to this meeting. The Personnel Committee did, did meet and, and look at those changes, and so that's, we are bringing those to you tonight, so.
Thank you.
In a missed meeting, why is the permit and code specialist not needed?
So through, I guess, as we've evolved and went in different directions, the, when we hired our zoning compliance officer, they took the permitting position, they took those duties, and then now with our further changes during the
duties, and then now with our further changes during the comprehensive development review process, those duties will be continued kind of on that side. And so that specific position just kind of got us through a spot where we needed to fill a hole.
Any other questions? No other questions? Then I'd ask for a motion.
The personnel changes to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. In a second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Ballance?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Coppinger?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. Motion carried. Anything else? That's it. Commissioners, do you have anything before we adjourn? Nothing? Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.